I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in our nation. We are a free, democratic, and just as fair and just as well.
Thank you for the meeting, the comments of the public at this time. No one wish to address the board at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, you all had copies, is there any additions or deletions?
I actually have a couple again. Page two, Phil, under Correspondence, second paragraph, third sentence from the end. It says trustee Penfield asked trustee Jefferson, I believe my question was directed to Mike Pedro regarding any issues with the village code.
Okay. Okay, so the Mike Pedro instead of.
Right, and it's any other problem from a village code point of view, with the changing of the dimensions of those lots.
Okay.
Okay. And then one, two, three, fourth page in, I guess. In the lengthy paragraph regarding the discussion of the purchase of the new vehicle.
Fourth page.
Yeah, it could go anywhere in the paragraph, actually. If you look at the first full sentence on page four, it says trustee Penfield asks if this is something we have to vote on this evening. I would just really like it noted for the record that my request was because we were seeing the figures for the first time that evening. And that I had not had a chance to review them before. And also, same paragraph right at the end, I guess it's the one, two, third sentence from the end, and it again addressed the issue of waiting two weeks before voting on it. And it's the sentence in the middle of the sentence, but she asked the board to wait to vote on this issue, adding she would feel much better about voting not for it, but on it. And the last thing I have is, I'd also like the explanation of my vote going through the record as well. And it was something to the effect of not having had sufficient time to look at that and not establishing the need for a vehicle as a priority for the village.
Motion.
Got it.
That's corrected.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hockel, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bills, you all have copies of the bills, is there any additions or deletions I'm saying?
No, we're done.
Thank you. You want to talk to the board?
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills.
I'll second, okay.
Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. All correspondence.
We have one item that was added on, it was a letter from Lake Champlain Lake George Regional Planning Board, dated July 28th. To whom it may concern is the local official of your respective community, I am sending this safe-to-date flyer for the Stormwater Management Trade Show. It is a comprehensive and educational forum for interested parties to learn more about stormwater. This is an excellent opportunity to learn the basics of stormwater and for the more advanced, there are opportunities to view real-life examples of stormwater retrofits and become familiar with the latest in stormwater technology. It is being held September 30th at the Hilton Hotel in Lake Classic. And post is the flyer for the event. I encourage you to pass this along to the planning board, zoning boards, Department of Public Works, code enforcement officers, local officials, and any other interested stakeholders. And they have a, this little flyer which kind of recaps what I said.
There is no RSPT on this, so if anybody's interested in going, we've got a couple months to work on it. Just get on. Somebody's going, we'll just drive up for today. That's it? Correspondents, report of mayors and trustees. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to give a huge thanks to the Historical Society for an excellent, excellent show that they put on last Thursday night here. If you missed it, you really missed a good time. And my hats are off to them. Second of all, I'll, it's an apology to the people on the southern end of the village. Today, we cut your power off at 10 o'clock. It was necessary, we could not do the outage on Saturday or Sunday due to rain. Boys did a super job, three and a half hours, and we're back on. Complete, this project is complete. So I want to thank them. I have a resolution for Delaware Hudson Railroad Station, and this is for the Historical Society, or whatever you want to call it, the state of New York. Says whereas the Village of Rouse's Point purchased the former Delaware Hudson Railroad State, from the Canadian, I'll take that word national out of there, Phil. From the Canadian Pacific Railroad. Canadian National's a separate railroad.
That's what Mary gave me.
It's Canadian Pacific Railroad.
Okay.
In 2002, and whereas the village board trustees, which is preserved, is a historic building built in 1889, which is part of our heritage for the present and the future residents of the Village of Rouse's Point in northern tier. And whereas the board trustees feel that this historical site would benefit from being listed on the national register, therefore be a result that the DNA railroad station listing on the national register would provide recognition to our national, state, and local heritage and assist in preserving it and further be it a result that the village board trustees of the Village of Rouse's Point unanimously approve this application submitted to your office for approval of the DNA station to be listed on the national register. The resolution shall take effect immediately. Does the roll call vote? Trustee Hockel?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
And the mayor will tie.
Excuse me, do we have a first, second on our?
I'll second.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. And next thing on my agenda is I request an executive session for pending legislation. Motion by myself, seconded by trustee Hockel, roll call vote, trustee Hockel?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
And that's it for me. Trustee Hockel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is to request an executive session to discuss reading contract updates.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Hockel, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Hockel?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
And the mayor will tie.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the appointment of Carrie Jeanette at $8.84 an hour as permanent full-time account clerk at Pappas, effective 8/16/04.
That's a motion, do you need a second?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hockel, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried.
A little controversial item, I think, was a new village logo. I think people got different ideas, but you just have to come to a compromise someplace along the line. You can see one is a picture of an early Patriot with the word Village of Rouse's Point established in 1783 and gateway to the revolution. And another one of a sailboat, Village of Rouse's Point established in 1783, gateway to the northeast on it. Let's talk. I like them both. I wouldn't you like a combination? And forget the lettering on the logo itself, but have it on the, have it on the sign someplace. You know, have it.
Can I first ask where these are going to go, John?
Any place that there's a logo.
Anyplace.
Okay, so signs at the entrance of the village.
New village signs, entrance signs.
Okay.
We don't want it to look like the current ones that look like we're entering Clinton Correctional Facility.
Are they also on village according to that stuff?
They would absolutely say this, yes.
In lieu of what's already there, or in addition to?
In lieu of.
Well, but see, different departments do have different, you know, like.
Because we just put the water tank on the pickup, the water plant.
Exactly, exactly.
Probably works, probably would have these.
Okay.
Well, I kind of thought it would be nice, what it brought to me, to have a link between our history and the present and have a combination of maybe the Patriot, a distant thing of Montgomery and a sailboat, a logo. Maybe that's too much, I don't know, I'd like to see what a mock-up looks like.
I think we can take a look at it, sure. I think Fort Montgomery certainly would be very appropriate, too. And I think so many people, visitors to the area and our own residents use the lake for recreation, and I think the boat is very appropriate.
I think it is, too. And I, I don't know, who came up with the idea of gateway to the revolution?
I did, well, the reason why.
What about gateway to the American Revolution?
That's fine.
Yeah.
The reason why I said that was, how many years ago was it?
1776.
No. I don't remember that.
I'm surprised.
When the Senator Leahy from Vermont tried to push to get Lake Champlain designated as a green lake. And of course he couldn't get that designation, but he got his wish, he got the money, and that was the most important thing. We are part of that funding now, but Stafford's came up with the, he said, well, you've got to realize that Lake Champlain is a gateway to the revolution. Again, saying the American Revolution, that's very appropriate. And I said, well, if that's the case, then Rouse's Point's the gateway.
Why not take advantage of the opportunity?
With the bridge here, though, too, we are, we're also the gateway to the northeast as well. You can see how both of them.
Yeah, we are, that's so.
So you're saying, take a, picture this with the lettering off from these.
Take the lettering off, but have it on the.
Like on top for around it?
You know, like the new signage.
Come run down around like this.
And then the picture itself would, we could take a look at that.
Just the pictures, yeah. I think what we.
You could put a boat going by for Montgomery?
Have a, pardon?
If you put the boat sailing past Fort Montgomery?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, be really nice.
That'd be fine, I, well, we don't have anything, but it's just, especially looking at. Why don't I have the, our person put together a mock-up of something like that, a combination, maybe two or three different options, Phil? And we'll bring it back in the next meeting.
Yeah, you've got to understand, we're sort of dragging our feet on this because the website is coming to a head very fast, and we want to get this down in place on the website. Melissa, you had something?
Thank you, I had to risk so long times that I would yell, but thank you for letting me. I just, when you were talking about the gateway, what came to my mind was Lakes to Locks, because that is how we're always described on the Lakes to Locks Trail. We are the gateway to New York State, to Lake Champlain. And I know they have a template, a design template, that they would like to use throughout the region. I wondered if you would like me to contact Janet Kennedy and see if there's any existing template that might help you with this? Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Be glad you do that.
I just wouldn't want to use something else that everybody else is using. I think we should sort of keep this unique, belonging to us.
Right. And they were the ones that did the historic interpretive signs?
Yeah, I know that.
So they might be able to give us something. I'll just see, and just wanted to talk to them.
Phil, is what we're describing too elaborate? We go on one?
Depends, okay, if you want to go.
Okay, okay.
If you want on the website, you know, you don't, you can't have to take a.
Right.
Right.
But it doesn't mean you have to go on your website, I mean, it's just a thought.
I think if it's going on the website, we're looking at something applied to other sites.
I'd love to.
Let's see what we can do.
But if you want a picture, you know, like you might get lucky, you might go take a picture from the, from the bridge with a sailboat going by, I mean, especially this time of year, and get what you're looking for. Instead of trying to have a true design.
Think with a digital camera, then you're easy to put on website.
You got a camera?
Still taking pictures?
We'll take our coffee break and move over to the little parking area tomorrow and have a coffee with her, okay?
No, you're not, because you're on vacation.
Never mind.
I'm not coming up here to take your picture.
Okay. Okay, then we'll bring something back in the next meeting. Hopefully you'll have the two days before the meeting. Legal notice, zoning board appeal, Rouse's Point notices hereby, given that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Rouse's Point will hold a public hearing on Monday, August night, 2004, at 4:30 PM or shortly thereafter at Osted Hall, located in the Rouse's Point Civic Center, 39 Lake Street, Rouse's Point, New York. The purpose of this public hearing is that Randy LeMaire Shazie, New York requests a special duty permit to convert a two-family apartment house located at 137 Lake Street to a three-family apartment house. Also, Leslie Matthews requests an area variance to Village Zero on his property located on the east side of Route 9B at 292 Lake Street. Persons wishing to attend such hearing may do so in person or by legal representation. The regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals will follow the public hearing. Carol Hadfield, zoning board.
Do you need a motion to publish that, no?
No, you don't.
Okay.
And one more item, Melissa Penfield is here tonight, and she probably has known you want to make a report tonight, and also to get authorization to travel for a meeting in Albany. So, Lizzy?
Thank you very much. I would just like to start off by showing the Rouse's Point Quality Community Newsletter. I think you all had copies in your mailbox. I'd like to thank Lisa Meskell for all her hard work on this. She came to our last steering committee meeting with a draft, all ready to go. We were all so grateful because it's quite a time-consuming process. This will arrive with the village utility bills this month, and it's going to provide an excellent description of what being a quality community is, what that will mean in terms of downtown and waterfront revitalization projects. Most importantly, it explains the visioning process that we're going to begin in the fall, where we ask the residents to come in and tell us what they'd like to see for the downtown and the waterfront. And so I thank you again to Phil, the mayor, Carol, and Monica at the village for the help in getting this out in the bill. The back side of the utility bill actually has our new yahoo.com email address. We created an email account that all of the committee members will be able to access. So if anyone out there has questions or comments, you can call a committee member or just go to rousespointqc@yahoo.com and leave us a message. And that will be on all of the pamphlets that do come out. The board has a packet I just passed out to you on the Main Street Grant Program. I don't need any kind of a decision at this point, but I did want to give you an update on where we stand and make sure that you're all set in terms of going ahead from here on this program. The Notice of Funding Availability, the NOFA, that we were waiting for, was issued about a week and a half ago, and it was a program very much as we expected. A nonprofit agency must apply for the funds for this Main Street program. So I've contacted Friends of the North Country about turning in an application for us. And this would be for building renovations in the downtown. They're focusing on what they call mixed-use commercial districts, traditional downtowns where you have a storefront on the ground level and then apartments upstairs. Friends is willing to put the application in for us with no charge, and all they would be looking for would be 10% of the cost of the grant for administrative monies, and that would cover their costs. And that, that's a very reasonable, I think, amount of money that they're asking for. They really see this as part of their, kind of their mission, and they're willing to help us out with it. If you looked at the program with the blue title, or the sheet with the blue title, Main Street Grant Program, what, after speaking to Victoria Simpson Johnson from Friends, what we are proposing is to put in a $200,000 grant application, and that would be due on September 20th. $175,000 would be for building renovations, and we would ask property owners in the downtown who are interested to volunteer for this program, because it's a 50-50 grant match program. So the grant would cover half of the cost of their renovations, and the property owners would pay for most of the remaining 50%. This would be available for facades, for the fronts of buildings and the big storefront windows, also for whole building renovations, particularly the housing units upstairs. This is run through the Division of Housing and Community Renewal, so it's very much housing-oriented also. And we had spoken in the past about the village contributing some fraction of the match from the IEEP account that you have, using the energy efficiency monies perhaps to help with replacement of storefront windows or any other energy conservation projects as part of the renovations. That would be the only village contribution. There would be no money from any of the village funds, any of the village accounts to, as part of this grant process. The second part of the grant application would be a $25,000 street skate improvement project, and that is 100% grant. There's no match on that, which is nice, because that's the 25,000 that would go to the village for the things that were done out in front of the building. And so, is, are there any questions on that approach?
When you make the outcome, you say Main Street or?
Right, it has to be what they call a well-defined business commercial district. So we would get to set the target area, but it would pretty much have to be the traditional downtown. I was considering, it'll depend, I think, on the responses that we get. I'm not sure about the purely residential rental buildings. Some of them go down Montgomery Street, which is all part of our kind of downtown core waterfront area. In reading the grant application today, it looks to me like they would be eligible, but I'm not 100% clear on that. We'd have, we'd have to check on.
You set the boundaries or?
We would, we would set the boundaries. And I think their recommendation is you keep the boundaries very tight, because if you group the buildings close together, you show more of an impact when you're done, and they like that. They really want to see something that'll have a clear impact on the downtown.
The $25,000 street skate improvement.
Right.
That might be used to repair that sidewalk.
I'm sure it could be used for sidewalk, yes. In fact, I think that's very much the idea. The only restrictions that I've seen, it has to be tied to the area where you're doing the buildings. So do the sidewalk in front of the buildings, then you should be, should be all set, I would think.
$25,000?
Well, about $70,000 to do the whole thing, so $25,000 is a nice kick.
I mean, it was $100,000 to do Maple, so.
I don't know what we'd make for sidewalk in Maple.
But at this.
See, that's not putting new sidewalk in. That's just repairing it, bringing out the snout, the bricks. So it would cost about $70,000 to do the whole street.
And attached to this just brief summary sheet are two pages of information from the NOFA, from, that came right from DHCR. It really, in terms of our timing, it really couldn't have come at a better time. Our activities in terms of visioning, planning, the steering committee's existence, I talked to the gentleman who's our rep in Albany on this today, just the fact that we have a steering committee gets us points. This is really, they want the public input, they want to see that it's part of a bigger plan. And hopefully, what would happen if we're successful, although we don't have our plan and our design standards in place now, by the time the money arrived, probably well into next year, we'd have the plan, then we'd have the money, and we'd be able to make a good start on what we want to do downtown. And I'm hopeful, and I believe that there are property owners in the downtown who will be glad to take advantage of this, because it basically provide, will be providing 50, 60 possibly percent of the renovations that they want to do. And so if you would be willing to approve me to travel down to Albany on the 11th, there's a two-hour workshop for our region, and I think it would be very helpful if I could attend and get any of the main questions answered, and maybe get any, to meet with the people who will be reviewing the grant and get some additional information.
Thank you, Melissa. I would like to make a motion to ask for an investment, we had to travel to Albany for the grant workshop on the 11th.
I'll second that.
Okay, whatever. And that we reimburse her for her mileage and also for love sit mobile.
Right, where? Yes, she's after that. And then tie-in waivers. I have a motion, second any discussion? Motion by John is seconded by trustee Jefferson. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Hockel, trustee Penfield.
I have no specific items this evening unless Erin has any update on our pending sewer project.
Yes. In the last few weeks, we've been in contact with the EZ and the EFC, and we expect their comments by the end of this week. We spoke to them, they've had some real minor comments, and we're just waiting for the official written letter. At this point, we would like to perhaps schedule a sewer committee meeting for the middle of next week, get the final approval by the committee, and at that point we can put together a plan for bidding as far as advertisement dates and things of that nature. So we'll just need to know what days it could be, guys.
Did you have a particular day?
Monday, any day other than Monday or Tuesday.
So Wednesday or Thursday?
Be good. Any particular time?
Afternoon, afternoon. 2:00.
2:00.
2:00.
June 2:00.
Wednesday or Thursday? Wednesday, Wednesday, 2:00. Thank you, Phil.
That's nice, we can write.
That's great. That would be the 11th.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We're kind of using morning as the 11th for another issue we have going on.
Right, that was my question. Has that been set up yet?
It looks good, but I haven't got official confirmation.
Thank you, Erin. That's all I have.
Thanks for trustee Penfield, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to make a motion for an executive session to discuss police matters.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote, trustee Hockel?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
And the mayor will tie.
Okay, does anyone from the board want to go to the meeting? The Minnesota Electric Utilities will be in Fairport, New York on September 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th. I can't go, I just can't take that much annual leave at that time. So Kelly said that she can't go either, so if nobody wants to go from the village board, I'd like to make the resolution that we allow the MEUCA Executive Committee to be hereby designated as the accredited delegate of the Village of Rouse's Point.
They have a second?
Second.
If they hold it in Denver, I'll go.
Denver?
Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual side of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Sorry, I've got to ask if the roll call.
Oh, okay. You got, you got who made the motion?
Yes, I do, sir.
Roll call vote, trustee Hockel?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, my second item is the, I'd like to make a motion for authorization for the village justice, William Herzog, to travel to Saratoga Springs for some. William Herzog, to travel to Saratoga Springs for some mandatory advanced training. And I'd just like to stipulate this in the motion that it looks like one night of lodging and mileage at the current rate, unless living within 35 miles of the conference, will be reimbursed by the state of New York. So, I'd just like to put that in there, that we're going to give him mileage, but we're going to get back one day of lodging and his mileage. So, I'll make, put that in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor? Vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, that's the only things I have in my jacket right now.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore.
I did have the village park, but I'm going to wait for the next meeting because I've got one more thing to check out.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Phil?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I just had one thing. I just wanted to say that for the next couple of days, as part of the sewer project, Carl Bauer will be knocking on doors between the village offices and the north end pump station along Lake Street to get into people's backyards to lift up lids on manholes that are in their backyards and collect information that will be vital for the upcoming sewer project.
Is he going to have some ID badge or something for you, show people that way they know?
Uh, customarily, he's never been that before, but if that's something that needs to be done.
He's going to be here tomorrow? He's going to be here tomorrow?
Uh, wasn't going to be, but...
No, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Carl will be here tomorrow. That was out of the police department.
I think you guys have some ID showing who he was.
Okay.
They'll make up a badge, body weights.
That'll work. Right?
Is that it? You know?
I'm here just to update you on the water project. We have instrumentation Bella coming Wednesday, install new pieces, get it right. Hopefully, that will resolve that. Couple other ongoing things. I talked to the plant people this morning or this evening. So, a little piping modification to the plant seems pretty straightforward. What they want to accomplish, basically, one of the chlorine injection taps was relocated in the field and resulted in a little lack of chlorine in a certain plant operation sequence. We'll discuss that with Gary on Wednesday. It's a pretty simple little fix today, I would think that they would want to do it in town. But I'll report back to you on that. As far as Maple Street paving, I understand that the O.P. has told us that eight fifty week made fifteen would be appropriate.
Sunday. I don't think we're going to pay on Sunday, John.
Well, I'll get rid of all the blood brothers tomorrow and see if we can speed in that schedule. The only other thing that I have to report is the Army Corps of Engineers under sewer outfall called the girl today to see where our permit is. She had been shipped off to Singo's for ten days, but she promised, guaranteed, but she promised that she would issue our permit tomorrow.
Wow. I understand that there's...oh, no, no, that's another question. Too many things going on, John.
We also did a, today, you might have seen Doug's fellow Carl, as well as our surveyor up there, we did a final check for the bid documents and stake that crossing on 9B for the contractors. Stick that in.
We done it all.
Field check worked out real...just exactly what we thought, but there's some...there was no problem with the plants and elevations and all that, which is what our main goal was. There is some stakes out there. I have set stakes for the manholes so that people would know where it's going, and I'll coordinate that with Doug as far as any input back from the public on that. There's one manhole that the O.P.'s going to want to relocate a little bit, but it's real minor stuff.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. The other guy next to you. You're already at his turn. Well, you got anything else?
That's it for me tonight.
Melissa?
Just a quick question. Paul Marshman, our new rep from the Department of State, would like to come and meet with all of us, and I was wondering if two weeks from today, before your August 16th board meeting, you would be willing to come in at 6:00 for a brief joint meeting with the steering committee and the village board? Would that work for everyone? We thought that might be the easiest way to get the board together. She's expecting to come in on the 16th and actually stay for a couple of days and work on our whole situation with us. Thank you.
I'm just checking the...